...to the regular school committee meeting of December 17th, 2014. Calling the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We have an all-new rearranged kind of agenda tonight based on some of the input that we had in our workshop. So we'll try this out.
Yeah, it looks great.
And hopefully we'll like it better. And we'll talk more about those kinds of changes a little bit later. But right off the bat, so Talia doesn't have to hang out for too long, we're going to do student advisory update from the high school. Talia?
So Neshoba has had a great December so far. On December 3rd, Neshoba DECA members traveled to Bose to meet with members of the marketing team. Today was the mock DECA day for the Neshoba business classes. Each student dressed in business-appropriate attire and presented their unique ideas and ventures. Last Wednesday, Neshoba participated in the Hour of Code. Many students were introduced to code for the first time while others made their own games. Following this initiative, a presentation from IT representatives on careers in technology was given during activity period on Friday for interested students. At the school store, students are collecting toys for tots. Everyone who donates gets a free lanyard as well. Last Friday, National Honor Society hosted a gingerbread housemaking day for kids in order to raise money to sponsor local families to attend Camp Sunshine. And I did not receive the sports report, but I know swimming has had two meets and they've lost both of them, but they've had like five school records so far.
Wow.
And the wrestling also had, I think, one or two meets.
And then when one child, one student made sectionals.
Oh, awesome.
Did the first time?
No, I think last year we had one or two, but it's early in the season, so sorry.
So the qualify already.
Pardon?
So the qualify already is exciting.
Yes, it is.
So that happens throughout the year?
There isn't like one meet, like when they're getting ready for it and there's just one meet?
There's like a baseline, you have to like get it on the baseline to like qualify.
Okay. So like you have to qualify for like the mid-Watson leagues, and then you qualify for sectionals, and then you qualify for states. So it's a big deal for them.
Oh, wow.
But I'm sorry if you missed you, I just wanted to make sure you had all the information.
And I can add to the basketball, girls varsity won by 10 points last night. Boys varsity, double overtime game, it was so intense, lost by one point.
Heartbreaker.
Thank you, Teddy.
So, now, we're moving on to new business. This is, this is the new part. Trying to jump right into sort of the meat of the meeting early on and get to some more of the, more of the routine things later in the meeting. And that way we might be a little more fresh and ready to go with when we need it the most. So, we'll see. We'll get feedback later on how everybody likes it this way. So, moving right along to new business. And the first item is the request for legal fund, and I'm going to turn it to you, Michael.
Sure. As I talked to you at our last meeting, so the MARS, Massachusetts Association of Regional School Districts, is looking to solicit funds from its members, districts, for a legal fund to sponsor legal action at the, against the governor for what they perceive as a violation of a law that was passed in 2010 that stated that regional transportation funds would not be reduced more than the cuts to Chapter 70 funds. The governor currently is proposing that the total increase for this school year for regional transportation be eliminated, so it'd be about $18 million. So, they're asking member districts to contribute to a fund up to $1,000, and then they would draw on that fund to pay the attorney to wage a legal fight.
So, how many members are there in this MARS?
Approximately 72, 72, 73 listening.
So, do they have a lawyer that will do this for that amount, or could just drag on?
To my knowledge, they haven't hired one yet, but they have a firm that they're looking at.
Has this ever been done before?
Legal challenges to the governor?
Yeah.
Not by this organization, but legal challenges, yes. Yeah.
So, anything of this, anything similar to this?
I'm, maybe not the historian to be able to, I don't know of, I mean, certainly, you know, for example, there have been challenges to the Chapter 70 funding formula in the, in the courts.
Legal challenges?
Legal challenges in the courts by other parties, but including school districts, individual school districts.
Have they been successful?
One that I'm thinking of that was much before my time was, it was, I think in 1997, it was, is that when Duquesne was governor? It's Brookline v. Duquesne, and it was successful. So.
So that tells you Brookline has a lot more pull than district schools.
I think there was, there were many districts that filed them as a friend of the court, you know.
And they were, they were in it with Brookline?
Probably not financially, but they sided with Brookline.
So, do they have any kind of a plan, like they're only going to spend so much money, or once you jump in, you're in it for the long haul?
No, this would be, we'd be only in it for up to $1,000 and that's it, so.
And if they don't use it, they return it?
They're going to bill us. Give us a, so.
Do we need to vote on this?
I would ask for a vote, and that way it's clear that you're dedicating a thousand, up to $1,000 of our legal fees to that purpose.
So this money would come from already budgeted for legal fees?
Correct. I mean, that's line we charge it to.
Okay. And the idea is that it could potentially return us?
Right.
Thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands, yes.
Hundreds of thousands.
But we're covered anyways, right?
We're covered for our budget this year, yes.
This year, so this will affect the year after that?
Right, because we budget a year in advance, so the amount that we were going to get this year, we would be applying to next year's budget. So we're essentially starting next year with the same revenue for regional transportation as we have this year.
But if we did not?
It's as close to.
But if we did nothing, then the budget that we have of busing would be the same this year as next year?
The revenue for the budget, yes. Not the expenses.
So doesn't, expenses might be more?
Expenses might, will be more.
Will be what?
Well, two reasons.
The budget's not going down. I mean, the state doesn't go down.
But generally, the costs go up because, in this case, we're going to be going out for a new contract, and we've been able to keep minimal increases based on annual negotiations within the one contract that we have, but when you go out for a new contract, generally you can expect increases.
And it sounds like from the letter that you wrote to Kate Hogan, that she at least received the lawsuit.
She received the letter.
And that they, as one of 74, I think she said?
Correct.
Other legislators are also?
Supportive of the notion, yeah.
Going to kind of be in?
Right.
Be in the governor's office and face about it?
Right.
So is she encouraging a lawsuit?
No, no.
So, with that kind of representation, do you, you think a legal action is?
Well, I think it would put it to rest once and for all. It's come up twice now, three times. We prevailed, just, we prevailed the first time by convincing the governor to change his mind, and circumstances happened, so it made sense to be able to prevail, but two times since, you know, the scheme, it keeps coming up. So if it went to the Superior Court and they ruled one way or the other, then, you know, we have to live with whatever the outcome was.
Has anyone talked to the new governor?
Not to my knowledge.
Because, I mean, that's on his budget at that point.
Well, so here, at the time we started this, certainly we hope to get going and moving it forward. It does appear that it now will be in the hands of the new governor. It also appears that the deficit might be larger. I just read today's paper while I was waiting for the meeting, that the deficit appears to be growing, so.
So all more reason?
All more reason to?
Yeah.
See if we can't carve it out now.
And of the 74 other districts that are involved, that's what we said, right?
It's like 73, it was 74 legislators, but yeah.
We'll round it off to seven.
Yeah, seven.
How many of them have?
I have not had a feedback on that yet.
Okay.
So I don't know, we're all kind of in the same boat, getting our December meeting to getting out.
Just going out now, yeah.
So.
When did Neshoba?
So, the plan was to hit the road as quickly as possible. We were asking districts to take their vote in December so that we could get a number and know in January what, what kind of proceeds we were going to have, as I am on the board, what was closer. And so, that's our goal at our January meeting, to hire the attorney, or at least put the small group together to go after and hire the attorney.
So, one last question. If out of this roughly 70 districts, 35 of them say, "Yeah, we're in."
Right.
So then the other 35 just benefit from?
That is the way it happens, yes.
Yes.
And what are you on this for?
Just a member.
Just a member.
Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Hello?
Huh?
Is there one?
Yeah, and you're on the whole night.
Sorry. You got a broken nose late practice, you know. Day in the life of the feds.
Wrestling?
Wrestling, yes.
It'll be worse. It's, it's your recommendation that we do this?
It is my recommendation to participate.
And our legal, the money we have budgeted for legal stuff in general in our budget is in good shape right now?
Yes, we haven't had any minor consultations.
So we have, so, so it's reasonable that, that this will not breach your budget on that light night?
Right.
And it can't go any higher than $1,000, but it might be 500.
It might be 500.
That seems like throwing away money to me, especially if we don't agree to do it and a majority of the other districts involved do. And I always think that when you're involved in any type of legal movement, you can make the commitment and you're in or you're out, and I just don't think $1,000 makes that much of a difference. And you could say that if every other district says that, then it won't make that much of a difference, but.
So does that mean you think we should do it or we shouldn't?
I'm, I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay.
Because I don't think that it's substantial enough to make a difference. And it just feels too loose. And I, and I, and that's not a vote against you?
No.
That's a vote against the concept.
Yeah, I think there are many districts that are going to have that same opinion.
What doesn't make sense is this is the carrot to make everyone go to the district. Every, you know, I've been to the Hill but twice, and they hold it out and say, "We want everyone to go to district, regional district."
Right.
And the carrot is they'll make the transportation. It's all through the lottery. And then we've got the casinos going in, which is supposed to help education. So, why aren't they going after those promises? Why are they suing? I mean, those are promises. I mean, that was the carrot to move over.
Certainly, regional transportation is often the carrot they raise first, as the governor's, in the last few years, really promoting regionalization. And that's one of the arguments that we raise, is, you know, what is your real commitment to regionalization if the one carrot you can offer is?
Never out there.
Never out there. And you retract it once it is out there. I mean, like, we went from essentially 63% funding to 90% funding in this year's budget, and now he's taking about, taking us back to 63%.
Well, we never did, because he's never been given to us. I mean, do we ever get 90%?
Well, we would have if we made it through this fiscal year.
We would have, and that's why he's taken it away, because he knew we never had it.
We got two, we got one full payment of it.
Of 90%?
Of, at the 90% rate, because it's quarterly.
It's supposed to be 100, okay. So, I mean, it seems like they're putting the fight in the wrong place.
They being the regional board?
Mars.
And where, where would you think the fight should be?
Well, I mean, basically lottery and the, and the casinos, which is what they're portioning, and all that money coming in, that was supposed to fund it, right?
Oh, no, because that doesn't happen until after FY15 is done.
But that was always the premise behind the lottery and the casinos is to help education?
A big part of the lottery is, yes.
So, does it?
Well, they, it's not a dedicated source, fund source, so, yes. I mean, there, the state does raise quite a bit of revenue from the lotteries.
But it doesn't go to education?
It's not a dedicated source. You know, they have a general budget, general revenue budget, general expenditure budget.
So, why don't we just go to them and say, "Look, this is what you said it was going to be, make it what it's supposed to be." I mean, if I did that, I'd get sued.
Well, and that's what we're trying to do, is sue them.
Right. Try to hold them to the fact that they promised this and they're not pulling through on their promise.
And there is a law, there is a law in the books that says they are, there are two laws. There's a law that says they're supposed to fund us 100%, and there's a law that says you can't cut regional transportation more than, more than Chapter 70. And he has not cut Chapter 70, so our argument is you can't cut regional transportation, because that's now more than what you're cutting.
And so basically they're violating a contract?
We think they're violating the law.
The law, that's fine.
Yeah.
But they don't seem to be.
They don't agree with that. That's the purpose of lawsuits.
Get lawyers involved.
Yeah.
Just something about that.
And that's why we want to cap it, too. I agree that if you didn't, if you said just go into a court case open-ended, then it could be a black ball.
And there's no, there hasn't been any lawyers involved yet, so nobody is able to give us a percentage guess of?
Right.
How successful they might be able to be, correct? That would be a nice thing to have, but.
So what kind of power does this MARS have?
We've been pretty influential, we were able to get that law passed. Our executive director was a pretty influential advocate for getting that law passed in 2010.
Tying it to Chapter 70 money?
Tying it to Chapter 70 money, yes. And so, you know, in the last five years that he's been executive director, he's built quite a reputation for advocating for regional schools on the Hill. So, you know, we are a known presence there, along with MAS, the larger superintendent association.
What did MAS do, have any pull?
It certainly, I'm sure that at the point that we need to have folks file as friends of the court or friends to the suit, we would reach out to MAS, because a good portion of MAS membership is from regional school districts, so I'm sure they're going to want to proceed in this way.
You're saying MAS would want you to do this?
I, I would think there would be a good number of MAS members that would support and file, you know, a friendly brief in this case, because so many of the membership are from regional school districts.
I, I personally think for a risk of somewhere between $500 and $1,000, if we can estimate that, for the potential to have potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars coming through to the district, I'm not, you know, I don't know, but it seems like a good risk to me.
You said there weren't involved, lawyers involved yet.
Right.
So have we consulted lawyers, I mean, has the group consulted lawyers to say whether this seems like something we could win, or?
That's what I just asked.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
I don't, we haven't talked to anybody.
Okay.
At least hasn't come back to the board, hasn't it yet?
Anyone want to make a motion? I just don't want to spend too much time on this.
Right, right.
I move that the Neshoba Regional School Committee authorize an amount not to exceed $1,000 toward the Legal Defense Fund organized by MARS to reinstate regional transportation funding to the FY15 budget levels.
One second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Maybe they're standing.
That was different. That's one.
It's a tough one, thank you.
So is that?
So 4-2-1, is what I counted.
Do we need five to get it to pass?
No.
No?
Still majority.
Okay. Okay. Leasing of the school van, Michael will let you do that one.
Sure, this is, we had a budget item from our approved FY15 budget for a school van. We've organized the lease and negotiated the best lease terms. George has provided us with the background on that item, and so we're ready to purchase. It's a 2014 Chevrolet Starcraft. It's a 14-passenger activity bus. While it'll be based at the high school, it's a district vehicle so that anybody from any of the schools can take advantage of it. And so this would be a four-year lease for a total purchase price of $46,306, and the rate is provided as a draft motion at, at a rate of 3.14%, which is pretty competitive.
So is this a lease to own?
It is a lease, no, correct.
It is, Brandon.
Questions?
And how much did we budget for this year for?
We budgeted $15,000. You might remember this, originally, we had originally had a full purchase price of like $45,000, and then when we finished the budget, we cut, cut it back to the lease amount of $15,000.
Okay, so the payments for this year would be a little less than that?
Yeah, be slightly less than that.
Okay. So it's within budget?
Yes.
And who uses this bus?
So, this will be used by those activities that are less than 14 kids, so math league, occasionally tennis, golf teams.
Tonya Rich gave a really good.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's all those small groups that instead of having to rent the bus, we can do it on our own.
So, for example, you know, wrestling does not get anything, they don't get any money from it. Hey, they don't, they drive themselves.
So if we can get under 14 kids, they can fit on this?
There's not that they get a bus this. They've never been bused.
They were bused last week, they're running.
Really?
They have, they have to supply a bus, it's like the law.
Yeah, because you always, you always drive.
You can.
There, there are options for.
But, yeah.
Most of the time you're not allowed to drive.
They were bused last week, and they offered a bus for a Friday, but.
Most of the time you drive transport.
They were, people, they were not people driving, so I think he was trying to save money and could use this, as an example, for the 14 kids who can't get a bus.
They're trying to show how much it would save versus getting a big bus that has one kid on it, but they have to get the bus if they can.
And who's authorized to drive it? Yeah.
So we'll have a, we'll develop a protocol about only people who are trained to drive, but.
Is there anybody trained yet?
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
No, because we don't have it as of yet, but.
Oh, really? There's, so is there additional training in addition to the, don't, don't people have to have like a special?
Not with this, that was the purpose of this one.
Run their license for students to drive students?
We don't need a special license for this particular sized van.
What about the other vans we have now, who's authorized to drive those?
Right, we don't need a special license, we do a special training for them.
Okay, so those people who are trained for that is the same thing, could do this?
Yeah, could, but in most cases, it's going to be the coach or a volunteer.
You know, I was wondering, the, with all the fees, I think everyone pays, do we ever get a rundown of what all that goes through?
Well, it's a general offset, so it's not assigned to a particular account.
Oh, it's not, so it just goes into a general fund?
General fund offset.
What's the activity fee for, user fee for sports? Yeah. Pays for the coaches, pays for refs. Can I make a question?
Yes.
And your fees to tournaments?
Yeah. It's written right there, do you see it?
I read the picture.
You see the picture of the van?
Oh, I got it. I move we authorize Assistant Superintendent as Chief Procurement Officer to enter into a lease of four years with Wells Fargo Equipment Finance for the purchase of a 2014 Chevrolet passenger bus with the terms described in the memo dated December 12th, 2014.
Okay, Kathy has the second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, Lane, did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this is a late addition to the agenda, a request from the principal of the high school, I believe.
Yes.
To change the midterm schedule for January. Michael, I'll let you explain.
Sure. So, we traditionally have had four late starts for midterms, and he, they normally have started, we've had traditionally three late starts, and they've normally started on the Wednesday, Thursday, and the Friday. He would like to switch them and have them start, this is right after the Martin Luther King Monday, so to have them go the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and have a full day on the Friday. So it's just reversing the order of the late starts.
So were the midterms still scheduled for these four days?
They're still scheduled for these four days.
It's different?
It'll just be in a different order. It allows for them to have a better schedule for makeups on Friday, because it'd be a longer day.
Will the schedule get changed online?
Calendar would get changed online, and the, if they've already posted their exam schedule, which I don't think they have, because they were waiting for this, it would reflect this change if we make it.
I have a couple of thoughts, I'll just say them out loud. One, I'd like to be cooperative with the principal, if that's what he thinks is best, then I'd like to vote yes on it. My only reservation is that we have a calendar committee every year that works really hard on this calendar, and they get ticked off when we make changes. So I just want to, in my point of view, those are the two issues, we just have to weigh.
I think if he went to the calendar committee, they'd want to support him as well, though.
And he was on the calendar committee this year, and he did make sure that the proposal, I understand, reflects this, so.
And has he promised somehow to communicate this to the community well in advance?
Yes, the, the idea would be to have it as soon as he promotes the calendar for the exam schedule, so whenever that normally is, it's probably picked up.
But the schedule is public right now?
No, I don't believe it is. The calendar, the calendar cites when the early, the late starts are, yes.
And that's a month away, basically.
Right.
I thought people had that in their hands about a year.
Yes, yes.
Whatever. Anybody have any thoughts?
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, it's a tough one. Primarily just because, you know, I know I plan my, my schedule months in advance. You know, you have to when it comes to kids, and if you're going to be out of town.
Those are big kids, though.
That's very true, that's very true. I'm little kids.
And transportation, I mean.
Yeah, transportation, yes.
They still get their buses, so, I mean.
Yeah.
Right.
Little kids absolutely, no, you can all of a sudden say, you know, where you're going, and like, but.
Right.
$15, $16, $17, $18, you can say, "Get on the bus."
Right.
Do it.
I think it's early, early enough to skip the timeframe to be able to make.
As long as the days are the same, I think, it's okay.
So the only change is the late start?
So the only change is Tuesday would be a late start, Friday would be a regular start, instead of Tuesday being a regular start and Friday being a late start?
Okay.
I think as, as long as everybody, all the parents and all the kids know, I, I don't think that this would be such a difficult change for the calendar committee to, to accept as, as it would be if we decide, "Oh, let's have a full-day staff development day on this day that was never proposed before." You know, I, I think.
It is a minor change.
This is a minor change, and I think that there, since it's, it's unique to the high school, I think we kind of have to go with, and it doesn't impact anybody else in the district besides the high school.
Right.
The buses will still, they'll just?
Just start.
Flip-flop.
Right.
This is a minor change and I think that there, since it's, it's unique to the high school, I think we kind of have to go with, and it doesn't impact anybody else in the district besides the high school.
Right.
The buses will still, they'll just.
Just start.
Plod. I'll make a motion that we accept the principal's, Principal Graham's proposal to change the late start day from Tuesday, I'm sorry, from Friday, no, Tuesday to Friday. Did I say that right?
Friday to Tuesday.
From Friday to Tuesday, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous.
The bus company will have trouble with that.
What's that?
The bus company will have trouble with that.
Same number of buses you do today.
And we'll rest assured that he'll get the message that he needs to publicize it loudly.
Yeah, we'll get it before the vacation, in case people are, or it's turned around.
I would suggest that. Okay, there's a bunch of policies up for first reading, policy subcommittee, who wants to lead the charge on this?
Karen.
Karen's.
Karen's not here, but Nicole. Laura's commented on them.
Um, yeah, there was really not a lot that went, went on, other than a few, you know, grammatical things here and there. Did the second reading of, I believe, all of these.
This is our first reading.
This is your first reading.
It is our second, we're the policies committee, read them twice.
Yes.
Okay.
Where the, um, do we know, because I don't see the markups in here, um, do we, did you put in markups or comments, do, how do I know which comments were taken or weren't?
I think almost all, all of yours, where you were.
Excepted all your revisions.
Because the one I was confused about was the buildings and ground security. Because I wasn't sure what the point of that was.
So basically, the point of it was just to clarify that we, we have cameras currently in the high school and that we'd be expanding the cameras to our elementary and middle schools as well to be inside the building. That's really the only point.
Okay, because, because when I was reading through it, I think even in the comments section, it was like, I'm not quite sure what the.
You did, you asked that, yes.
So this looks, I get this.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
I actually have a problem with this.
With the buildings and grounds?
Well, just security in general, only because, you know, I keep running into things where people are getting very paranoid. And is that our intention to make them paranoid or?
No, no, it's, it's for safety, I mean, they, they do come in handy for folks to have as a way to collaborate around what the different stories are around incidents that happen.
But don't you find that it's isolating people instead of bringing them together?
No. A picture is worth a thousand words, it can be very clear.
But this just isn't about pictures, this is about locking doors and restricting access.
But we already do, we already do that, I mean, we've used, that's existing language, I mean, that's not changed.
Locked doors are so different than building and ground security?
No, but I mean, really the only change is that we're talking about video cameras in the buildings for arcade, we have all buildings.
And so I heard a rumor that what's going on next is they're going to put, you know, they'll put cameras in every classroom.
No. Don't need those.
Are we going to afford that?
Well, I don't think they're going to be a choice, from what I heard.
Who is they?
Who's that?
Who is they?
Well, just a conversation that I heard.
Who is they?
The state.
The state?
The state legislative.
The state doesn't even mandate that we lock the doors, do they?
They do not mandate it, they have, they have some strong emphasis.
I know that every parent I know in the elementary school at least would probably, the heart attack if they weren't locked.
Right.
Right.
Why? I mean, I.
Why?
Yeah. I mean, for years. Why do you lock the door of your house?
Is it true that it's a state mandate that we have to have an S I L?
It's not a mandate yet, but they do in their report that you had, you had, gave up a couple of weeks ago, they're recommending that all school districts.
So they're recommending?
They're recommending.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify, I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
There is.
We don't have to get into that one because we don't hear what I think.
So do we have all of the, so in passing this, does that mean that we would be buying more devices?
It would be, yes.
So how many are we talking, what kind of areas are we talking about?
Depends on the building, so generally what we've done is they develop a plan for the ends of each of the corridors.
Who's developing the plan?
Bill Clary.
Bill Clary, Bill Clary has.
And Succi.
And they have what kind of background in security?
Well, I mean, we have the experience of where they are now.
There is a formula.
In the buildings.
There is a way to do it.
I don't, I don't know what it is.
No, there is.
Okay.
You know, that's why I'm asking, I mean, I just, because the problem that you're going to have is now it's going on the network, right?
They are, yes.
Yeah, and so they load the network up some more.
Right.
And you don't even have a plan of the network.
We do have a plan for the network and the fact, but the only time they go on the network is when we, when we access them, so you, you don't have to do an upload unless you require it, unless they're not uploading to anywhere.
You have a lot, like, you always bring up the network, is there performance reports on the network to show at peak usage?
We do appreciate that, yeah.
And, and are you hitting them all the time?
No.
Are you hitting fifty percent?
We do have times that we do hit, like, report card times and things like that, when, you know, all teachers are on all the time kind of thing, but.
Does it make sense to do, kind of, I mean, because there's so much back and forth about the, of the network and we have enough, we don't have enough, how do we know, and maybe, does it make sense for us to think about bringing someone in who's a third party and objective to look at it and give us an analysis on where we are? So that we all have an understanding of, well, you guys need it.
Our own IT people can do that.
Yeah, they've done.
I don't think that our IT people should do it.
You've shared it.
I think our, I think it should be an external group that comes in and looks at it from the perspective of what are you using now, what's your formula for going forward and.
But we have our own people that we pay to do that.
Yeah, you don't have your own people that you pay to do that, you have your own people that you pay to run the existing network.
Yeah, but they, they probably have a background in networking or computer science or something, so they should know, like, if you're hitting fifty. But I wonder if there's even any people in the area that would help just consult for free and just give an analysis if an analysis is something we wanted to get, you know, going to be network people in the three times. But it's, it's, if we're not hitting fifty percent very often, I don't know why there's always so much conversation about that, I'm just asking.
Well, I was just going to say, why would we go to this effort and hire somebody and pay money and just have them say?
Eighty percent all the time.
You're doing great.
Right.
They'll certainly come in and do that.
Why would we do that?
But I'm confused because you say the report says we're not doing great and I just heard Michael say that we're not hitting fifty percent very often, maybe sometimes we're over fifty percent at report card time. That, that seems like a normal peak period to me, but I don't have the data, I'm just listening to two people, one saying that the report isn't good and one saying it is, so maybe if we just got the report?
Yeah, we, we shared it at facilities, so.
Okay.
We'll just give it to, we'll put it in the bag in the next round for a school committee.
I think we need to get that on track.
I agree.
I agree too.
How many networks are there, like, is there multiple networks?
Yeah, we're talking about the policies now, right?
Yeah.
But, so, so the only, the only place where this, where the network becomes involved with this is if we were to download or to be accessing the cameras?
Correct.
Cam, knowing what we have at Stowe Community Park, you know, these video, you don't, they're, they're fairly reasonable to, to install a few cameras in each building and.
Right, it's not, it's not a big expense.
Right, and, and so, and those are going all, like, it's, oh, they're, they're going to like a DVR all the time.
Right, correct.
And if you want, you can log on to a, I mean, people who, who are authorized can log on to a specific site to access what's going, what's being recorded by the cameras currently.
Correct. That's what I said, that's what I meant.
And it would be good to spot check if you have one. And the doors are already locked?
Correct.
Any other things from the policy subcommittee that we should be alerted to or aware of on these four policies?
We are talking about meeting more than once a month for the next couple of months while we hammer out a survey recommendation, figure out how we're going to administer surveys or maybe some other sort of feedback loop, but.
Great, thank you.
We're not there yet.
And this was just our first reading, so we're not voting on anything.
Right.
Any other discussion or, can we move on? Lynn, you're giving me an eye.
No, it's fine, I mean, I just, you know, with this, with this policy of.
It's a policy?
It is a policy.
It's a policy.
You are increasing the budget and I just kind of hope that you put numbers to it. Show a plan and let us know what's going on because you are increasing.
I can do that the next time.
I wonder why it doesn't fall into facilities.
Okay, so we've made it out of that, we're going to move on to old business, hate to call it old business because it doesn't feel very old.
It doesn't.
District improvement plan for the coming year and we've had an opportunity as a, as a group to meet with a facilitator, a workshop leader who's worked with other districts on district improvement plans. I think it was beneficial, hopefully others agree, and I know I went out afterwards and looked at a bunch of district improvement plans for other districts just to make sure that we're on the right track because that seemed to be the question at hand is, you know, are we doing this like other people are doing it? And what I found personally, just by Googling district improvement plans in the state of Massachusetts, I found that there are, there's a million varieties, it comes in all shapes and sizes, and I was relieved and happy that ours is a sort of a cut to the chase model because a lot of the ones that I saw were like seventy pages, fifty pages. And they were more like our N E S K report than they were like our district improvement plan. But like I said, I found that to be a little bit of a relief, that we didn't have such a, such a document. So, I don't know, I was just, that's throwing on my, my two cents on that, anyone else have any?
My two cents is I think it's gotten a lot better and I'm glad we took the time, I think it, I don't think we can keep waiting, so I think we should take a vote. And I think we have, next year we can even do better and we can start a little earlier, that's my two cents.
I would like to thank you for putting this document together, this is, in comparison to what we have been working on, much easier and, and inspiring. And I appreciate all the work that, that went into this document and before I, I vote to have it, to adopt it, I just would like to, to say, you know, for the future, when we set these minimum standards, consequently, when a student achieves these standards, we feel like we're done. And without getting too emotional, I don't want to feel like that our job is to shore up weaknesses when our, when education should be more about, should be about more than just achieving a minimum benchmark. Thank you.
Are you saying we're going for a minimum rate?
I'm saying that we don't, right now, support the exceptional.
Okay, I would agree with that. And can we? My, my impression was when we sat down with Dorothy, it was process and format and we, this is much easier to read. Could we quickly go through these one by one because, you know, for me, in goal, I think it was two? Student growth. Two A went towards, seemed to be student growth, but two B seemed to be more about teachers.
Right.
So.
Two A is about teachers too.
Yeah.
So how is that showing growth then, for the student? I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of student stuff there.
Right, so they're actually both about students, even though, I mean, they're intertwined. District determined measures actually are about student growth and that's how, as part of the evaluation system, we'll be measuring educator impact and having conversations about what curriculum work we need to do and what kind of enrichment we need to provide and, and move kids where we need to or remediation where we need to because I think we need to have more conversations about getting as close to the individual student as possible. So that's where, that's why this is about, this is here because we will have a better sense of student growth through these D D Ms because every teacher has to do them in every content area and we'll have more data around kids and growth during instructional time, so, you know, it's live, it's during that, that peak, during that year, so teachers can respond to it and address it and work on it.
But what struck me is in reading, I'm just going to go off a little bit and then I'll come back, but reading the ones like Conca Kaila, I've never been to. You know, I'm reading it and it's about, you know, the students will show growth here, they'll show growth here, we're going to do this to, you know, we're going to increase this by eighty percent or we're going to get everyone to eighty percent or ninety percent. And then as they work down, they get more towards other things, like students are first, ours aren't student first, you know, and I'm, I'm like, wow, do we have the wrong focus? And then I'm reading and saying, okay, well, let's, maybe if we hit them one by one, maybe it's there and I'm just not seeing it.
So that.
But what you're talking about, even when you talk about the D D Ms and everything, I'm not seeing, you know, like, what you talk about the excellence, you know, where's the, where's the ingenuity for the kids, where is the, them stepping outside of, and we ask them to do it. But we don't ask them to do it, it's almost verbal but not, there's no, we're asking them to do it, but we're not expecting them to do it, I guess, there's no, there's no bar, I'm not seeing the bar.
So in the individual school improvement plans, you would see more of a bar because they're respective to the individual school scores?
But then, but then now you, if you're doing by the individuals and you've got bars, now you, now you're back in the way of your parity because you've listed that parity is important, so.
So we've targeted what the parity should look like, so the bar, the bar will be the same and it will be where their starting point might, will look different. So next year, when we look at our D D Ms, we'll have more of the individual student data that will be able to do more of what you're saying, depending on where Carcuk Carlisle's with D D Ms, they may be a year or two ahead of us because they were part of Reese to the top, we were not.
Okay, so can we, can we hit these kind of one by one?
That's the.
And not just do them as an overall, because again, when we look at some of the information coming in, I mean, you know, we're shooting for excellence and then we've got the M C A S scores and we look at the individual towns over the past five years, we've kind of lost the edge a little bit and I, I don't, maybe it's in there and I'm just not seeing it.
I, I don't know if we should do one by one again, we've done one by one and, and can I finish? Let me finish, I have, we've done one by one, this, this year, we're not going to, we're not going to go a hundred times over this to make it something that, 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 that we might love to the nth degree. I think next year, when we start fresh, if people find there's something big missing, like maybe your thing that you really find missing that's really big and speaks to you is we should have had something about students at the top of everyone. Or we might not be, I feel very strongly about what you said, I don't feel like we have enough in here about propelling our kids, not being an okay school, we want to be that excellent school, that, that's where I feel with these goals. I don't think we can get to that level, you know, this year, we're already in December, you know, this is this year's goal, so we have to move forward and take steps. I think we took big steps this year, I'm proud that we have, you know, baselines and I'm proud that we have better indicators of success, I am proud that we're all talking more about the same thing that we're wanting, but I don't think we can sit here and go through each goal again, one by one, personally, because I want to, I want to try to focus on, are we meeting the goals, are we even trying to get in two weeks? You know, not two weeks, but in two months, say, Michael, where are you, it's been two months, tell us how we're doing.
And these are the goals we are, you know, relaying out to the school community and within the school councils, we can urge, urge them. within the school councils, we can urge, urge them, you know, within these goals, what works for your school personality is we're, we're looking for excellence within these, within these goals.
But we're literally after, we're, we're a third of the way through school. But I hate to take a vote on something which you say. We have goals, but then, then, then not showing excellence, then not propelling the kids.
Lynn, if we wait until we, we go through each one, and we do three more meetings in this, it's gonna be half the school year, and we have no goals. I think some goals, and doing better job of goals is better than no goals, and sitting here for another two meetings, going through each one. That's my personal opinion.
And this is only, when you come down to, we're talking about our goals for this year, and we've, we've got...
I agree with you, that, that we've, we're gonna be starting this process again before you know it, and, um, it's not like, it's not like right now we're setting the next ten years.
The next nine months, well.
Not even.
Not even.
Not even.
Right, not even. You'll be back at this in June.
Right.
And I agree, and I, I, at this point, I think we've spent so much time on this, I guess I feel like we should, we should go with what we have with an eye to looking at what's lacking when we, when we're in June or whatever, evaluating how we did this year, and, and sort of, and, and instead of just like being oblivious until we, it's time to do our, our district improvement plan, next year, our focus when we evaluate should be, okay, what, what kinds of things? We can have that, part of that discussion be what we think we need for the next set of goals, so that it doesn't get lost or forgotten over the summer, you know?
Well, I also think that we need to keep in mind that this is a document, it's not our persona, it's not, it's not who we are, it's not what we're all eating, breathing, and drinking every day. I mean, it's a...
It's one facet of it.
It's a document. Um, and I, I agree with Kathy that I don't think we should spend any more of our time in this arena going over each of the goals, I think we should be more concerned with having the goals being executed and worked at, than, rather than plowing over them. I mean, you know,
We have.
We've, we've flowed, we've flowed a lot, um, and, um...
We have, and I, and I'm gonna jump in if you're all set.
Yep.
Um, and I suspect I'm gonna be in the minority on this. But inherently, I think it's, it's disheartening when people talk about how much time we've spent, we've spent enough time. I think that that's disrespectful to the process, especially given the progress that's been made. And I think I even put in an email that I appreciate what you did with this document, because it's so much closer to something that I can feel comfortable saying I believe in, because as soon as this is voted in, I own it. Um, but there are two areas that make me uncomfortable. One is, um, and I know that folks don't like to talk about MCAS, but it is a bar that's set by the state, and the state does measure us against it, and my assumption is that funding is somehow related to it, um, but MCAS has a big impact on where we're placed in the state.
Mm-hmm.
And our MCAS scores have not progressed, and in fact, in Bolton, our MCAS scores in the aggregate don't look good, and I think that's a disservice. And I don't see anywhere in here where we talk about similar to, and I didn't, I didn't know that's what you were gonna bring up, but actually, it's very similar to what you said, which is, and what you've said in the past, we're kind of pushing towards the mediocrity, and as soon as we get to that mediocrity level, or mediocre level, it's like, phew, okay, let's look at something else, instead of finding ways to push the students. And I think that's what is the mark of an excellent school system, so we need to get there. I also, you know, on a much more, um, lower level, I'm not comfortable with goal number four, because it focuses on a website, and it's what is, I, I know, four A is about a website, and then we talk about, it's, it's like one little nugget of a bigger issue, um, and I don't even know if issue is the right word. We talk about a website, we talk about getting people training for a survey, but we never talk about a district-wide approach to sending out information and pulling in information. And I think that that is, I think that's a mistake, because I think we could be, the little bit of effort, it could be a lot more effective with the messages going out and what we're taking in, so that everybody's on the same page. But the MCAS thing not being in this document is problematic to me, because it has an implication. Um, it's been brought up, um, by Bolton's Board of Selectment, they're not gonna let it go, whether we'd like that or not, um, and I suspect it's gonna be something that the other towns will get as well. All in all, I'm really happy with where we've gone, I still have some questions, I forwarded it out to everyone, whether we wanna address them or not, certainly up to the rest of the group, but now, I just think that MCAS is not here, we're approving mediocrity by not pulling out and elevating something with measurement.
Isn't that what Bolton was doing? Two A?
Let's just see if something was lost in there.
They just monitored.
We could have, that we would be a level one. Oh, so it is in the work plan, I, yeah, so it's in our, it's in the work plan to be identified as a level one district, um, as an overall, um, and maybe that's not large enough, but, so we could elevate that back up.
And level one is all about MCAS?
Level one is all about MCAS.
What's the significance of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's under one, uh, it, it's under, uh, goal number one?
So, I appreciate that. What I would prefer to have seen is an actual commitment.
Right. I mean, that work plan is, is what we work by, I mean, so that is our goal, that is where we wanna go, so elevating it up into the goals makes sense, um, and we can certainly edit it.
But if it wasn't here, we all know.
It, to me, I look at this as a complete document, so, I mean, this was supposed to be a, to make it more understandable as to where we were going.
But it needs to stand on its own.
And it does in the work plan, it's very clear in the work plan, but let's, let's elevate it to the vision, and let's put it right there. I mean, we could put it in one D, all learners will have access to effective, uh, strategies to access curriculum, and go beyond to become a level one school district.
So it says...
No, I know, I just, that's what I'm editing it to be, I'm applying here.
Laura, any comments on that?
Well, I, I think, you know, I think if you're gonna do the vote, just do it, and...
I think if there's pointed questions, we should answer them, if you have pointed questions. I just don't think that we should go through each one and talk about each section of each one again, personally. I think if there's questions, I like that addition, you know, we could do it and commend it.
Are there other, um, are there particular questions that you could bring up, Laura?
Well, I, I have an issue with one C. I mean, unless there's something in the work plan that's just not being shown there. I mean, are we just doing more of the same, or are we looking into other options and areas?
On one C?
On one C.
We're looking at a lot of different things, um, for social, emotional, especially at the high school.
It's one of those things where, I mean, you need to be able to see that there is something that can be shown, that's progressive.
Lynn, this is about goals, this isn't where the specifics get written, I can't tell you, because we're, we're exploring, we're researching, we're piloting some different things. This, this is about the big ideas, this isn't about the work that the principals or I am doing on the ground.
So not where...
That's not what this plan is for.
If you, if, if one of the goals, one of the components of, is this the work plan? No.
This is.
What is this called?
What's the vision, I think?
Ah.
The work plan is the old one.
Okay, so...
The original one.
Okay, okay, so if in the work plan, in order for me to feel comfortable, it said something to the effect of, um, you know, our, our MCAS scores are gonna improve by ten points in whatever subject across the district, or a range of points across the district, that would make me happy, because that would show a commitment to understanding where we are and where we think that our district could be.
Right.
Especially given the, the either, you know, it's been a plane, a standard plane, or it's kind of gone, gone down a little bit. I'd, I'd like to see that, I think parents would like to see that too, that...
Right, and, and that's in the individual school plans? You know, we, I looked at it as we wanna be a district that's a level one district, because all of the things, because there, there are different factors, not just by the points of the test, but other factors that
Right.
elevate us into the level one category, and I wanna give credit to all those different factors, you know, including kids that get recognized for advanced work, you know, that we move kids to advance, so we get credit for that, and that's, so, to me, it's a bigger win when we do a level one. But the school plans will have more of a, uh, dedicated, we're gonna go up ten points in math.
So who votes on those?
The school councils.
See, I don't wanna, I, then we don't have any influence over scores, right?
But why should we, when this is a district?
I don't necessarily want to have influence over every single school, just as a district, I just wanna see the MCAS scores elevated, and I...
And then we, and then that is the charge of the individual schools, so the, the school councils would have that in there.
So what do you give the, what do you give the school councils as a directive or a, Michael's directive, in order for them to do that?
So we tell them, I tell them, you tell them, that you wanna be a, we wanna be a level one district. Look at your MCAS scores, and what do you need to do to get there? What, what are the, what percentage of kids are being moved into advance? Set that goal, set that bar, because that's where the work happens.
Yeah, I agree with that, I mean, I understand that better.
So, you know, from your perspective, I think what you are saying is you wanna be a level one district, I wanna be a level one district. I think we could and should be there, there's no reason why we, given all of, all of what we invest in education from all different angles, there's no reason why we shouldn't be.
So do we tell the level one schools?
Right.
So do we tell the level one schools that a level one, that, that they're okay? Or do we ask them on?
No, they, because level one, you're not guaranteed level one, so you have to continue to work at it, so there, there are still things that within their, within their, um, individual categories, they have to continue to work at. They can slip out of level one just like that. So that's an annual effort.
So if we have a goal down here that we are kind of level one school, then the school councils have to put in their goals of how they're gonna get their school to be the level one goal.
Right.
That seems to cover it. And Michael, in your, um, work plan...
You go get that.
She's got all her terminology.
She's got it.
I mean, just 'cause you read it doesn't mean... See, I like this, I just don't like this. And in the work plan, it says by 2015, structure consistency in all district communications.
Right.
So it's kind of open-ended.
Yep.
So I'm kind of not comfortable with Lucy Goosey stuff, but that's kind of, I'm more comfortable with that than I am with these, because these are just pieces of what would roll up into that.
Correct.
That you like things that are more measurable, and in the work plan, they're more measurable. Am I understanding you correctly? In the work plan, no, they're not measurable.
For that particular, right?
Well, some of it is, but... All right, okay. I mean, I think at this point, do what you have to do, and do what you have to do. I, I do appreciate the responsiveness, though.
Thank you.
Is anyone ready to make a motion, another discussion before we do so?
You can still discuss after emotions are decided, just...
And the reason we have to do this now, other than we've been going around in round and circles, which I don't think we've been going around in circles, I think we've actually kind of moved...
It's been a nice trajectory.
I really do, and I think it's impressive, but especially given the personalities in the group, but, um, why is it important for us to do this now, because the budget's gonna be determined based on it?
Uh...
And it will sema, it will, is there enough in here that would create a problem?
So...
If we have more discussion...
We have been working under the assumption, other than semantics, the basic elements are, were, were going to stay true. So, you know, we have our work plan, and we're following most of that to, to get there, unless you added something. Um, so, you know, that's been helpful to us, and, and, and we're trying to build next year's budget based on the general tenor of the conversation that I'm hearing now, because you, you won't, unless you change dramatically, you, you won't change the basic direction in June, I mean, because the idea is to continue on, uh, you know, maybe with an added step, and we can move resources around to make that, but FY16 budget would be built off of this document.
Because I guess one of the things I'd like to know is, and you may, and the answer may be that comes, but of, of everything that is in the proposed plan, what are the areas where we, we should be aware that realistically, we've gotta come back and ask for additional budget because, in order to implement this? And, and I'm not asking you for dollar figures.
No, I understand. I, I think there, I think there are dollars, or there are either new dollars or existing dollars that will be continued that are attached to each one of these in some way.
So where are the new, just, just...
New dollars?
Yes, please.
Uh... Well, certainly around one C, um, there will be new dollars, um, in some regard, um, especially at our high school.
Is that the most staff?
Pardon me?
Is that the most staff?
Again, I'm not speci, I don't know yet.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for a sub-group to report out.
Yeah, just give, wait, just give us your feel.
Yep. Uh, one B, um, which is around the science, it'll definitely be new dollars around, new
Okay.
equipment and software, uh, and, uh, materials, books, and so forth. Um... Two A and two B, there are, it, it's gonna be continued dollars.
Mm-hmm.
This is a huge, um, s- staff, uh, initiative in terms of time for our staff to understand the DDM process.
Mm-hmm.
Um... So there's money there.
That's helpful, yeah.
Um... Probably, there'll be continued dollars in three A.
Mm-hmm.
And three B, there would be new resources there. Uh, three C, I'm not expecting any dollars there. I, I don't think we, we need to, given where we are.
Well, not for next year, right?
Yeah, right.
We wouldn't anyway, unless we did the...
A feasibility study would be anything, but I don't think we're ready there during the course of F seven, uh, F sixteen at least.
Yeah.
Um...
Hmm.
Four A, four B, we need to, we really need to look at our website, and who's hosting it, and get a, a more modern, which may have some dollars associated with that.
And it will, 'cause it's big, and you need it to be responsive, and...
Well, not res, responsive, we need it to be, um, ADA compliant, and there's huge cost to that, that we haven't even begun to tap into.
So is, that helps me understand why you put this.
Yeah, it's huge.
And, 'cause I'm looking at this from, why aren't we looking across the district of the way we communicate to people and being more consistent?
Yeah.
But if, what, the reason that this is here is because the website is broken, or, I don't wanna say that.
It's not broken, it's just...
It's not broken, but if it's sub-acceptable...
But it was just recently, are you done?
Uh, three years ago, four years ago, but we...
Did she say that in that long?
We, we just learned about new ADA requirements that we have to have, that it has to meet the ADA.
Like a, for the blind?
For, for, for hearing impaired, and... For, for, for hearing impaired, and, and the blind, yeah.
But you don't, it doesn't all, you just need a couple of changes.
Um, I, I don't know enough, yeah, I'm just learning about this from experiences my colleagues are going through, so I could really tackle this. We're going to look into it, and we have a colleague that's going through it now, and it's been difficult. So I think those are the ones that would, will be new dollars that you'll see.
Okay. So that was helpful.
3C might have some new dollars, if we do like that modular thing, I think you're going to talk about later.
Yep, yep. True. So.
Any other questions or points of discussion? Or motion? All right, and any questions answered? I believe. All right, I would, I'm just going to go out there and say, I think we're on a great, thankfully, a great path, and I would like one more works, working session. And I know that that's not comfortable for some, but that's okay, because it's my opinion. Is there a motion? No, it's not, it's an opinion.
Statement that when she came, both, um, say-
Both of them?
No. I move that we approve the district improvement plan as presented tonight in its final version. Um, to use in the remainder of this year going forward till June.
Do we add that MCAS piece, the level one school? When do we decide that?
Oh, the level school, one school was in there.
It's in the work plan.
It's in there, okay.
It can be added to one-
I was going to say, I read it.
Yeah.
Um.
You can add it, uh, to, as I read it, um, 1D, fits perfectly.
Um, Kathy, did you second?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
I want it with a thing in it, uh.
No, she didn't say that.
It didn't have a thing in it. No, I, I didn't know that.
She wanted it in that, in this document, yeah.
I want it in this one. If the level one school put in 1D, what you just said, you could-
She wants it here.
I thought we just clarified that it is here.
It's in the work plan.
It's in the work plan, she wants it up here in, in this 1D, as I read it aloud, putting it there.
I thought we were, that's what we were agreeing with.
Okay.
It has amended.
Why don't you make another motion? Approve the district improvement plan as presented with 1D, including the level one school goal. I know that's not my question. Sorry, I misunderstood that, Julie.
So first motion-
It still counts, it was voted, and it's, it's there, this is a second motion.
Yes, I want amended, to approve 1D.
I second that. And I don't, you know, I appreciate the fact that you think that we've put it too long, but it's such a, it, it just doesn't seem to be the right reason to vote. I mean, I-
I don't, I agree, I don't, that isn't the reason to vote.
I don't, I totally agree, too, I don't think it's, I'm voting because I think we've looked at it too long.
That is absolutely not why I'm doing it.
But almost, eh, eh, almost every conversation is about, I mean, the only shining star is, you know, raising to a level one school. Um, I, I'd like a little more givenness thing, and a little more-
That you, you looked at other district improvement plans, and had-
Do you have specifics that you'd like added, like a specific thing, besides?
Well, we're looking at, you know, we put four, and, and we're looking at, you know, improving the school, improving the space, improving the, the, the assessments, improving the way we track everything. And the only thing we have for excellence in students is level one schools.
So what do, would you like to add? Is there something specific, like, do, do you want to add another goal?
You know, I'd like to see more of incentives for students to, to show that they've got academic excellence. You know, and I'd like to see that, you know, what are, what are the teachers doing to prove that they are, you know, at the top of the game, you know, and they're continuing to improve, and-
I think the DDM work will be a lot of that, definitely.
But the DDM is for the students, not for the teachers, right?
It's for both, it's, it's to really-
And then the DDM won't be done until two, is that going 2019?
Well, they're, they're being done now, they're being done throughout the course of the year now, um-
And it'll be completed in 2019?
No, 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 they, they have to be done every year.
So if it's not, if it's not the DDM, is there, is there something else that we could add that would have? Like, I'm just trying to get to what is it, you know what I mean? Like, what is it?
But it, you know, I'm not even sure, because now, you, you're flipping around, it's, it's not, maybe not flipping around, I mean, it's not understanding, but you're talking about goals versus visions versus work plans. And, you know, I'd like to maybe steal some things from other schools, that other school districts are doing, um, that, that they've done really well with.
So, so I totally agree with you, but like, so, so in my experience, I do system implementations, and it's better to go live with something and get better and do, um, upgrades than it is to never go live and try to get the perfect thing. It costs a lot of money, it doesn't give people vision for what is happening today, it doesn't get your feet wet.
Yep.
So it's not about accepting because we're tired of talking about it, it's accepting because we've done a good job to now, and we have plans to get better next year, because I hope these have more of what I feel is important in it, but at least we're, it's just like having a baseline. Without a baseline-
And I also want to say, accepting-
We're doing it to ourselves, you know?
It doesn't mean that our work is done this year either.
No.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we, we will continue to meet, and we will continue to-
But if you have it-
But we actually won't, because we're going to be here, I will, I'm going to be here every two weeks.
But if it's a specific thing that's affecting you, then I think that we should try to get that on paper. But if it's more of a feeling, like, I have a feeling that I, I feel like the excellence in ch- in children isn't expressed here, but I don't know how to articulate that. Over the next six months, I hope that I can bring that out of my own experience, or learn to get it down, but I can't add value on that right now, because I can't articulate it. It doesn't mean I shouldn't vote on this, it just means that I have to work harder to get to what I want.
So now I'm wondering if, if what you say is, is, like, you've got an idea, but you can't articulate it, and maybe now is not, and this is not the place to do that and kind of hash it out. But maybe if we had, like, one more working session, and we all sat down and hashed out some of these things, maybe we could, and the next time, have a better feeling for this, because we come in and we look at it and we talk about it for a couple of minutes, but we don't collaborate a lot.
So I would feel okay with that if this was a long time ago, but I feel like I can't connect with this, because I wasn't in the first meeting where this was done. You know what I mean? This is kind of like, it's like, when I read online, it said, it works better when you have the workshop with the superintendent, when you lay it down and you feel more invested in the actual creation for the first time. We received the work from Michael, and then we, we, we didn't- We didn't go back, we, um, we tried to tweak it, instead of being on the ground with Michael and creating it. That's how I feel, next year, I'm hoping that it might be better, but I feel like Michael's done a good job, he's gotten a lot, like, from where, I think we've all done a good job of getting it better than it was.
I like what you said, but, and I look good, no?
What's she saying, I look good?
But what's going to happen is, we're going to, we're going to vote on this, and we're not going to see it again, because we don't usually collaborate with this, because a lot of these goals are similar to what they've been over the past five years.
But we haven't collaborated before ever, but now we're saying we kind of always, we all talked about in, in the last three or four meetings, that we want to be more on the ground floor with Michael. We don't want it given to us to articulate back, we want to kind of have the workshop with them.
But should we have done, we, we've grabbed- Tried that, too, I mean, was it two or three years ago that we did the workshop in the cafeteria, and had everybody contributing to what they thought should be priorities, and that was-
And it might have to happen every three years, not every-
That was a form, that was a form of getting a lot of people's input on where the priorities should be. But what I really wanted to say, and I was waiting my turn, is, um, that, and I, I said it once, but it's, it's only a document, and I don't believe, I mean, bringing the best out of our students and making them the best they can be, that's why we have great teachers. They're really good at that. And whether or not we have goal A, or goal C, or goal 2D written in here, isn't, in my opinion, going to affect the way teacher XYZ influences my kid.
Then why would we have this document at all? Because basically what you're saying is, it's not going to trickle throughout the district.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we can't let it get in the way of the good work that people are already doing.
Well, it wouldn't, how could it? Well, if a teacher's a good teacher, the teacher's a good teacher, Michael's not going to tell the teacher not to be a good teacher.
Because if we don't allow the process to move along, and we don't allow the budget to happen, then our teachers won't be there to be paid.
You know, Nancy, I got to tell you, I don't think anyone inclu- I guess, I'm going to speak for myself. I don't think I'm saying that I don't want the budget to move along. I don't think I'm saying that I want to hinder the budget. I don't think I'm saying any of those things that you just mentioned. All I'm- If you ask me, what do you think, I'm saying, I think we have done amazing work. I think Michael has been incredibly responsive, and I think in order for us to implement that additional student achievement component that feels just so right, I would like one more discussion, working session. If that's not comfortable for everyone, I'm so good with that, I get it, it's my bad. It's, it's my learning curve, and I get that, so let it be. But I don't like what you said, it feels uncomfortable, and it feels like you're taking it into a completely different discussion that none of us have even talked about.
Oh, well.
With the teachers and the, no, we all want to do the right thing, and nobody wants to hinder the teachers. We love the teachers, we want them to stay forever, the good ones, anyway, but-
Well, so, that was my point, is that we want to let our district continue to do its good work. Yes, we want to improve it as much as we can, and we've had, like you've said, we've made improvements to the plan. Everybody's been putting thoughtful effort into it, um, which is awesome, and it's way better than just saying, yeah, 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 let's go with this. I'm happy that people are putting lots of energy and effort, that's, that's not my point, that's awesome. What, what I'm saying is, now that it's time to start in on the budget, and we need to keep moving so that our, our district keeps, keeps moving, keeps working, keeps being able to do the good work that they do, that we need to say, okay, we've, we've done a good job here, now let's move on so that we can do the next step, which is get to work on the budget, so that we can continue to operate as a good district.
But that's what we just asked Michael, is another meeting going to hinder us? And he said, we're kind of moving where we need to move anyway, so if you don't want to do it, I get it. I'm just saying, one more working session would probably solidify it for me. If we don't want to do it, I get it, it's okay. That's what, but I don't want it to be oversimplified as to we're hindering the process.
Maybe we should vote.
Well, actually, something you said struck me, and it goes back to the, um, the MCAS scores, and when you see them laid out. And Bolton in particular, um, they did okay with sixteen kids in a classroom, but once those classroom sizes got up to twenty, they didn't do so good. So, you know, you, you talk about, you know, was it the teaching style, was it the small classes, what was it? So, you know, and I found it very interesting, and I, and I understand where you're going, but those big classes are here to stay, I mean, they're not going to go back down again, so-
Totally lost, and I was just related to what I just said.
You, you were talking about the excellence of the teachers, and you liked the, eh, but I'm looking at, you know, everything kind of into place, but, you know, and you're talking about, if you just want to talk about Bolton in particular, over the past five years, you guys haven't appeared all that great. You know, and I, you know, I don't know if it had to do with the larger class sizes, I don't know if it's teaching styles, I don't know what it is, I don't. But I, I just thought it was pretty curious that that's what happened. You know, and so I would like to take a look at this and find out, you know, let's give them something to, to work towards. You know, I don't, I'm not, I'm, this isn't what I do, I'm just kind of looking at it, and things just kind of strike me, but, you know, if we could have a one-on-one, you know, session to go over the stuff and hash things out and talk about it, not in school committee, I mean, it could be open meeting or anything, but, and just talk about it. You know, each one of those things, and, and get it to a point where, and, and again, I'm still having trouble with the vision and the work, and the, I'm sorry. And like I said, it's probably in there, I just, if I can see it and look at it and say, okay, this is what we own, I like that.
Okay.
And, and to your point, and I know that, you know, get it out there and get it moving, but we've had it so long that to take an extra couple of weeks and just dig in and actually, you know, get to the meat of it, because we're really not going to look at this again until we've done everything else, and we're back around to it, and then we're back to where we started, with, it looks better.
Well, you'll be looking at it again during the budget process, and then, and more formally to change it in June.
And we should look at it one more time before then, to check how you're doing against your goals.
Well, in April, that's true, that's going to be again in April. Which-
But I don't want to push it off, let's just do it.
No, I think, I think what Michael's saying is, we'll look at it, but we're not, we have to vote on it.
Oh, we're not going to change it.
No, I don't think it, once you vote on it, it is what it is.
Right. I don't want to keep pushing it further.
Until June, when we do it all over again.
When we start, it's too bad we can't-
But with the turnover, we, and we might lose three people, so we lose the majority of three people.
Good, I don't control that much.
Oh, I know that, I mean, I'd just rather do the hard work now and be done with it.
Can we try a motion again, and just see how?
There's two motions, though.
There's a motion and a second.
One of them failed, first one failed.
First one failed.
Who seconded Julie's motion?
I thought Kathy did.
Yeah. So that's what's on, so that's what's on the board, is to approve the district improvement plan alike presented with the amendment of the 1D, edit 1D to push the district to a level one.
District.
Okay, so-
Is that right, Julie?
So we have not taken a vote on that particular motion yet. So I'd like to do that now. All those in favor of the motion, as Alita just read it? All those opposed? Thank you.
So some of them are already on that?
Yeah. So that just passed?
Yes.
So it folds into the next item in the agenda, but one of the things I can do is have as part of my goals is the very specific MCAS growth that we're talking about. It's just the timing of when we get those reports, it just doesn't quite fit with the, but I'm fine with that. If you're fine with that, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so, moving along to the next item, B, in old business. Um, this is superintendent's goals, which, as you just alluded to, are directly related to what we just passed. There was, um, a suggestion made at one point, I think at the last meeting, that maybe a manageable way to do it is for the personnel subcommittee to, um, construct a set of goals based on these district improvement goals, for, to then be brought to the full committee for discussion and/or approval or disapproval. Is that reasonable, is that not reasonable?
Can people vote at that meeting if they want to?
The only restriction is, we can't have a quorum of the full group.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, that's the case at any subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
So like, we couldn't have five people at the policy meeting, because then we would have a quorum for the committee.
Okay.
Um, and that, that's true for finance and, um, personnel as well.
Could you just be a morning board member, could you go to the morning board, or it's teleformed?
Teleformed.
I, yeah, I think if you're participating.
Right. You can submit items to members of the committee, subcommittee, and that way they have it before the conversation starts.
I mean- So like, if you're attending as a parent, that makes little to no difference.
As, as long as the expectation is you're not participating.
So what's the point of doing it in the par personnel, personnel subcommittee meeting, rather than-
Just to make it more efficient.
Just, just like, policy is now going to take on the evaluation process to make it more efficient,
rather than having eight of us sit around.
So if, so the personnel subcommittee puts together its recommendation, it brings it to us, are we going to be pressured to make, uh, to take a vote on it that day? Are we going to have opportunity to discuss it? Is there going to be a time limit on it? How's that work?
We would have an opportunity to discuss it, we would have, um, you probably, we'd talk about it in one meeting and vote about it, vote on the next.
So it's, it's, it's time boxing, it's time boxing the discussion, is what it's doing.
Well, if you would prefer to have it to, for us to do it in the full committee.
I'm not, I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just trying to, trying to get what the, what the ad, what the advantages of-
Just trying to make it more efficient as a process.
Is, is there any reason why we could-
Is, is there any reason why we couldn't, I don't know, as a committee, but not as, is there any reason why we can't all get together and just discuss it and hash it out, not formally? Like, any of this stuff? Or we can only discuss it here?
Yeah, discuss it here.
We can only discuss it here.
You can have other meetings that are a topic, but it has to be a-
Posted and-
Posted, open meeting.
So you could actually post, so we could actually post, what are you talking, this is the superintendent's report, so we could post if there's gonna be an open, so we just get down and sit down with a copy and just hash it out, who was attending, considered?
As long as it works out. We're posted in advance and, I mean, all of our meetings are recorded. I don't know if we could do that when not recorded. I guess we could. There's no loss.
Right. No, we would still have to have some, some form of minutes of that meeting.
Actually workshop should not require that.
Oh, really?
No, we don't have to. We just sit at the workshop. We don't have to.
So, well, that's an interesting idea, Lynn. Is everybody willing to come out on some, well, I don't think we can do a morning, 'cause too many people work. We'd have to do an evening. Come out on an, an additional night, not that school committee night, and do a workshop.
Just on superintendent's-
Just on superintendent's goals. And you would have to be there, right?
Have like the begets.
Well, I mean, I-
I'd wanna be there by the begets.
Alita does not have-
But it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be formal, right? It could just be a loose-
It can be like a workshop, a much looser setting than these formal.
We just wanna vote or anything about it. We'd vote on it.
Right, exactly.
And take it as a decision.
It'd be, it'd be like a personnel meeting when everyone creating much.
And then it, it wouldn't be timed. It would be, and you could say what you wanted. I mean, it was-
Feel like everyone has their voice unheard and not rushed and-
Because this is all new process stuff. This is, right?
This is in January.
Well, we've always had superintendent's goals, but the identifying what, what indicators are the standards that you wanna pull out, that's different.
And does it or does it not tie back to the goals?
Um, there, there should be a section. Yes, there should be a-
That makes sense.
Well, it does to me, but every once in a while, I'm not really sure.
If what makes sense, you make sense to everyone else.
So, um, Alita, would you be able to organize us for a night workshop?
After Christmas.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be.
I think it'll have to be after Christmas.
Okay.
Is that what everybody wants?
My only reservation of doing something like this, I think is definitely beneficial, but also, I feel like I trust the policy people to do their job and to get their policy done, and for the most part, to have it done and present it to me and give me the information I need instead of discussing the whole thing, 'cause I know you guys spend hours, and I'm just using it as a policy meeting. So I would hope that if when I'm on a committee, that, you know, whoever is there, you're sort of trust or, you know, have confidence in that body to weed through some of the-
That's why we have side committees. It's, it's to streamline the work a little bit.
I mean, we can do every little thing we do in a workshop.
But it's not a vote of no confidence on, I mean, it's not, I-
I'm, I'm just saying, that's just sort of playing devil's advocate of getting into-
The superintendent being essentially the one staff member that the school committee-
Right.
Is ultimately responsible for.
Interesting.
So, I think, I think that's, that's what kinda makes this a little different.
But I think we just need to be careful about saying to do that for every, not that everyone's opinion is definitely valuable, but-
No, I, but I think, um, well, we can, I don't think the, I don't really think it will, it's- Because we're supposed to-
I do.
So, do we wanna nod our heads, take a vote, uh, to see if this workshop concept is gonna fly?
Does there have to be a quorum at the workshop?
There does.
Yes, I think anytime we meet, right?
A quorum is how many?
Five.
I asked that question.
Three times a month. I need to be told.
You can't meet as a body vote, or-
I, oh, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't have a preference. I just don't want, I just want the opportunity to-
And it's-
Yes.
Well, you would've had an opportunity either way to have, I mean, this would be time for discussion and a vote.
Except that we're always doing this, so it's tough when it's a big scale issue like that. It's very critical and really important to be, you know, banging on the clock, so, either way.
Oh, yes, I have. Well, this would've been yours, right?
So, should I go around the room and ask if you wanna workshop? Kathy?
Sure.
Anyone?
Sure. I'm on the personnel, okay.
Sure.
More friends.
Yes.
You know, you do.
You know you do. I really don't, because I have way too many ditties that I'm spending. Whatever.
Wait a minute.
I thought you were asking for it.
No, I never ask for it. If it weren't fits into my schedule, I'll do it. Yeah, you're confusing me with Lynn again.
No, why not?
But you're the one asking for it.
No, you are the one who said, I really want an opportunity to have-
Yeah, if it's done here, that's fine.
So if it's like the only, you want an agenda item that, for the goals, and this is not necessarily wrong either, that we can, we can dedicate an hour to in a regular school committee?
Well, we can have substantive conversation, yeah.
So if there's only five people that said sure, I don't think we should, 'cause if one of us can't make it, then we don't have a quorum, so.
Of course.
No, five's a quorum.
Fragile.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven of us just said yes, didn't we?
No, one, two, three, four, five, six said yes. Well, you were a baby.
I think if, 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 well, if I can speak for Lorraine, trying to tell you guys what Lorraine is thinking right now.
Good luck.
If a regular school committee meeting, there can be a substantial amount of time dedicated to it in the agenda, then the Personnel Subcommittee meeting, Subcommittee can come up with the recommendations and then-
That was good.
Alright, thanks. I think, but I thought that the Personnel Subcommittee coming up with the recommendations was the part that was bothersome. No?
Is that the part that's bothersome?
No.
Okay.
No, it was the opportunity to have a discussion without cutting the discussion off, when it's a large-scale substantive issue like that, right?
The time estimates on the agenda are just approximations. They're not anything that we've ever actually stuck to. And you may recall that our general cons- prot, norms and, and protocols for our meetings was general discussion. We would do a time check at a half hour, but there, we could certainly agree at the beginning that, that whatever would be not even, we wouldn't even think about the half-hour time check and there's nev, and just as at Stowe Town Meeting, which at least some of us have been to, it doesn't say that you have to cut off conversation at half an hour. It just says that at half an hour, let's see where we are and see whether we wanna continue or whether we feel like we're ready, instead of people just sort of going on forever.
I like what you said at the end of that. That's good. That works.
Could we do, could personnel meet, try to come up with a proposal, have a discussion here, and after that, we feel like we need more time as a whole to discuss and sort of weed things out. Could we then do the workshop then? We might be-
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Decent needed.
Great idea.
Thanks.
Do we have a timeframe though, or when do we have to vote on that?
Oh, yeah, Michael, what's that?
Well, you, you, the evaluation has to be done in April.
Ah.
So, you-
But you can't set the goals and then do the evaluation the next week.
March. March first. You got a month.
So, you know, if, if personnel could meet, um, you know, first couple of weeks of, of January, and then the twenty-eighth, um, is a meeting night. If we could set aside a bulk of that meeting for the agenda to be the evalu, evaluation process, that might, might be-
Would fit into the timeframe.
Yeah, fit into the timeframe. Meet, is there anybody? And that way, it's a regularly scheduled meeting. Nobody has to change their schedule.
Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you over there, you good with that?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Great, so-
Oh, that's great.
We don't need to schedule a separate workshop night, but we do need to schedule a Personnel Subcommittee meeting, um-
But she's not dropping the, um, designated workshop, plus it's needed.
And, right.
Right.
But we don't need to schedule it yet, because we don't know yet if it's needed.
Yep.
Got it. Okay. Um, next is Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Facilities. Maureen?
Um, we did not really discuss much other than the, the warrants from there. Didn't seem to reach any questions on those, so.
Okay.
The only other thing we discussed is, um, modulars that Mike was going to mention at some point.
Okay. Um, and Kara's not here. Is there anything else from the Policy Subcommittee that we need to hear?
I kinda feel like you said it off.
I kinda, I'm guessing you did. I don't- Okay. Um, that brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Sure, and actually, most of my report is, is done. We've been doing Hour of Code, which has been a great, it's a national effort to make kids more aware of technology and, and how, uh, much of what they work with every day and play with, uh, on, on computers, uh, how it comes to be. Uh, so that's been exciting in each of the schools, um, and we have some dedicated pictures on the webpage to show what kids have been doing. Um, I think going down right through this, uh, we do have, uh, I think the town of Bolton has coordinated a, a meet to look at the, um, green road issue, um, from their perspective, and, uh, maybe coming up with some kind of compromise around parking signs. Um, so we're gonna walk tomorrow, I think it's at ten AM, um, and just see how many signs we need and where they should be placed and so forth. And, um, the suggestion was that we'd have some sort of cooperative agreement around. They'll put them in and we'll purchase them. We'll, we'll work that out. We'll take a look at that. Um, and then, discussion, uh, from the workshop, a follow-up was that we would have, uh, some opportunity with staff to have input, uh, and tentatively, um, talk throughout doing that on a Wednesday School Committee meeting, again, trying to maximize your schedule, um, which would be January fourteenth, uh, to fit into the budget cycle. Um, couple of complications. One is, in order to really get staff there, it's gonna be an earlier meeting, um, because it's just a long day. Um, the other complication is, at seven PM, we do have a major presentation by Chris Heron that's been arranged for months and months and months, um, so-
That's the same night as the school committee?
That's the same night as the school committee.
Can we change that date?
Can we change the rate?
School committee maybe?
We absolutely can, and, and it's one of the reasons why. Yeah, so, if we did the workshop, you know, four to six, I mean, it makes a full night, but, you know, it works out. Uh, but if you wanna change to the night of the, the meeting that we have with staff, we just have to figure out a date and get something out to folks.
And who's Chris Heron?
Chris Heron is a former Celtics, uh, basketball star who became drug addicted very early on in his, uh, youth, uh, and pretty much throughout his career and, um, until he got destitute, didn't straighten out, and now he does, and one of the things he does is go out and talk to high school kids and parents about everything from telltale signs. He's a motivational speaker. Um, he, he, he did speak to the students last year, parents, uh, and, uh, kids spoke very highly of Heron, having parents, um, speak. Uh, we just couldn't arrange a parent night last year for some reason. It didn't work out in our pre-schedule.
So you, you keep in January fourteenth though as the, um, Staff Report?
Well, that needs to be decided.
That's great, though. Started early, did it, done it. And that is good for the staff.
Yeah.
It's great.
I mean, we could set the time limit, so like, four to five thirty. That way, you can at least get home or get somewhere for dinner or whatever.
So how do you, how do you, uh, contact the staff and ask them to participate?
I would send out a blast out of email.
And do you get, do you encourage them to do it somehow? I mean-
I would, yeah.
Is it the whole staff or just the principals? I thought it was just the principals.
No, I, I think, when we did it three years ago, we invited the entire staff, and I've already asked the association president to, you know, drum it up and so forth. I didn't give a ten, I gave a ten day, but-
How many showed up last time?
Um, I don't know. We had about twenty-five to thirty staff.
Yeah, probably.
So, but it was later too. I think if we had it earlier, uh, we'd get them.
I wonder if that, the night when that gentleman is speaking is a good night, because they wanna stay anyway, or it's a bad night, because they wanna stay?
Yeah, I don't know. That, I, I don't have a good feel on.
I don't know either. Makes it a long day for them, if they-
Right, I can, I can definitely put that question to the association and see what they think, and then get back to you on that. Would that help? Should've thought of that.
I think so. I just, I just wanna have plenty of advance notice for them. I don't want them to find out about the meeting two days before.
Exactly. No, I, I want them to leave before break, knowing when this meeting is, especially it's so close afterwards, like, they, childcare, all those kinds of things.
Is there any way to tell, um, like, who's participating? Like, is it the same teachers all the time?
Probably not.
I don't know. I, there would be no way unless we did an invitation and had an RSVP. Then we can do that. But, yes, I think it's usually the same people all the time.
So, we'll leave it that you'll check with them and-
I'll check with them.
Send us an email with just that information?
Mm-hmm.
That would be great.
And, and-
And right now, it's been January fourteenth?
January fourteenth at, uh, four PM.
At the high school.
Um, well-
No.
The best setting is, is to have table talks, I think, so that you're talking with people and not having somebody come up and talk to a panel. Um, and the, really the best environment for that, the, the two best that we have, because there can be round tables, this Florence Sawyer Cafeteria and the, um, Center School Cafeteria. At that time of the night, Center School Cafeteria is being used, um, so Sawyer's the one that would be best. But we could have it at the high school and just make do with the cafeteria there.
We've done it in the library there before.
We could, depending on the numbers. That's the only thing. So, I may have to do an RSVP to do it. We could do it in the library.
'Cause the library is much better acoustics than-
I, I totally agree, yeah.
The cafeteria here is really hard, really hard. You can't hear yourself think.
Yep.
Um, so you want it centered?
So, let me look at the media center. We'll look at the media center and, and try to make that happen.
I also think it would be nice to go to the high school to encourage the high school teachers to-
Yep.
Participate.
Yep.
That's my opinion. Um, okay. Um, anything else?
Yes, one last thing. So, um, I had an email from the town administrator in Stowe. Uh, they have two modular units that are attached to Pom Pom Civic at school purchased about ten years ago with the town of Stowe. Um, they have been willing, uh, been looking to try to move them. They have a, a repurpose committee that has, um, designated Pom Pom to be used for some other purpose, uh, town purpose. Um, the modulars aren't part of that purpose, so they would like to donate them to the district.
Oh.
Um, and, uh, so, and-
Yay!
It's worth, it can be worth something, uh, but the cost to do it, Bill Clary's got a rough estimate of about eighty-five thousand dollars, um, and so-
That's the cost to move them.
That's the cost to move, set up, uh, and reattach or, or figure out an attachment process to the existing building. So, um, he's seen them as late as about October. They're in good condition. Um, these things last for about twenty-five years, so we get about ten to fifteen years of life out of them. Uh, they're nine hundred, there's two classrooms, it's nine hundred square feet, so they're bigger than the existing classrooms that they are now. They're air-conditioned, um, real air-conditioning, not that fixed up.
Four classrooms.
What's that?
There'd be four classrooms.
Oh, two. They're two.
One or two each, huh?
They already used one set.
Oh, okay, so then we-
They're only giving one, so. So, um, so they can be moved over to the summer, um, if, and I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but, um, Bill has done very informal measurements that it would fit behind the high school between the two academic wings. Be a tight squeeze, but he thinks it'll fit. But we've gotta look at permitting.
And ducts and-
Uh, farther down, uh, just past where, sort of like in front of the baseball field, so if you were looking from the baseball field, back to the high school.
Where the windows are, against the windows?
It wouldn't be against the windows, but it'd be in there, so.
Oh, oh, right, there's an open, yeah.
It's an open area, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, um, so this, some preliminary work that has to get confirmed up, codes and so forth, um-
Oh, I see.
That we'd have to make sure, but, um, if, if the general sense is you'd like us to look at it further, um, I thought I'd, I'd put it before the Space Committee tomorrow night too, to just get their sense of, is that moving too fast, um, or, or what? Uh, but, um, I think they can always use the space.
So where would, I'm not even about to-
We'd have to budget for it in FY sixteen.
I think it'd be nice, I'm not gonna say it, Stowe would be a little more altruistic.
Are you kidding? We should charge it for them. They put him on, they put him out to bed and nobody caught.
Right.
Is that what happened?
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted to sell him.
Well, then counter.
Well, zero.
It's zero. I've counted enough.
Oh, that's right. It's to move him. Thank you, Stowe.
They do have some value, but, but they're only really valuable to schools and-
We'll see.
So.
So we need more information. You're gonna get more information on it.
Yeah, I mean, the general sense is if you want, you want us to explore it, we'll explore it, make sure that it can work, and then it'll be in the FY sixteen budget.
And they're typically two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Brand new, we, oh, easily.
We asked Talia, 'cause she was here early and she had said, "We so need more classrooms."
Yeah.
She said, "The only concern is, is it easy to get to because they have such a tight."
Time frame, yeah.
Time frame.
Right.
Who's this?
Oh, it's Talia.
Oh, I just talked to her briefly, 'cause she's from Stowe, I asked, I asked her if she was in them.
Oh.
When she went to Pomposetick.
I was in them.
That was it?
She said her friends were.
She said her friends were. She wasn't, but.
No, you couldn't.
Yeah.
Was there only a seat?
Anything else in the superintendent's?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Ten years ago she would have.
And we know what we're doing there?
But they've been empty for years.
Yes.
Um, correspondence? We, I know.
Did anyone get that letter from Hillary something?
I couldn't guess.
And I couldn't open it either.
Oh, okay, I don't understand it.
She was inquiring about school choice and whether or not it would, it'd be possible for her younger sibling to attend as a school choice student.
Those aren't our rules, I mean, those are the state rules. Our decision is whether we have school choice or not.
Right, which at this point, we don't for entering kindergarteners.
Right.
So she was advised, I think by Lorraine.
I knew someone responded, so I was not very bothered.
I, I did, I did respond to her, yes, but I didn't know that it was a state reg, state regulation. So she is mistaken when she says that other school districts, when they are dissolving their school choice program, they don't grandfather in siblings.
She really has, you don't.
I don't know if they do or not.
If she, if they are, I don't know if they are or not.
But legally.
We just totally got them in trouble.
Legally, but they don't have to.
They don't, legally they don't have to.
Correct.
But they can.
I'd have to get another ruling on that. I don't believe they can.
I thought when we went through three or four years ago, remember, we were sitting in here.
Yeah, I don't believe they can.
You couldn't, 'cause it would go against the whole lottery system.
Correct, right, right.
We've been around that subject several times. Yeah.
So these other school systems are in the wrong?
I believe so.
Perhaps, if that's what they're doing, let's not.
Yeah. I don't wanna get them in trouble.
Right.
But if she would like them to be in the same school system, she's one open moment.
Always an option.
I'm sure that helps her a lot.
Did anybody else have any other correspondence?
I did.
I did too. You go first.
The first one I have is the easier one. Um, someone called and asked me would we, he, he's on the listservs, but he doesn't get, he wondered if we could put the agenda for the school committee on the listserv. And I don't know if it is, or, 'cause I said it is on the website, it's always posted there, and he said, "Yeah, but I don't always, I don't always have time to go or remember to do it, is there a way to put it on listservs? Does this make sense?" I don't know.
I mean, he's a parent, so, I mean, we could put it on the school messenger. We do have listservs, we could do the listserv, although they've been sort of a dying art, I think.
Yeah, the listserv, he'd only get it if he subscribes to.
Right.
He does.
Nothing will be using those anymore.
Yeah.
He does, but maybe to your point, if no one's using it, maybe there's some other, does, is there, is there, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here, but maybe if the concern is that people would like to see it, if the principals could include a link in there, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, but I think the point is to encourage us to find a more broad-scale distribution system that's already in place and include it.
What's that?
What?
I think the website's hard to navigate, that's probably one of the biggest, biggest problems.
Well, it's buried a little bit, I think maybe that was it, but, but I think more to the, to your point, it was just, can you just send it to us? You send stuff anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we can put it on the school messenger.
With some, I don't know.
Yeah.
That was one. And then I got thirty pieces of correspondence about the Apex Fund Run. So would you.
I got some too.
Would you like to talk about it? Feel free.
Oh, well, not if you got thirty, I didn't get thirty.
Lights at thirty?
Um, I'm happy to, I have to leave at eight.
So go ahead.
Well, okay, I'll just present the, the, you're all shaking your heads, 'cause I don't even know what's going on.
No, I don't know what you're talking about.
We didn't know about it either. I didn't know about it until I read about it in, I don't know, the school newsletter.
They came home with a thing, yeah.
They came home with something? Well, I don't have anybody in that school, so I didn't get it.
Yeah.
So, I didn't know about it until, no, I know, I read it in the Bolton Independent.
Yes.
That was the first thing I knew about. So there's a fundraiser going on at Florence Sawyer School, and PAC, parent organization, is running a fundraiser. And they hired a company to come in and run the fundraiser for them, and it's a fun run, and the kids run around the gym and they ask for pledges to raise money for how many laps they do. And as a part of it, they have a team, the Apex Team, I don't know if that's what it's called, they come in and they do like messages in the classroom, like motivational things, and they give little prizes and toys for kids who raise money and have certain number of pledges. And they make a kind of a competition for them. And the problems that I heard were several. One was that they were taking away from class instruction time to do this, giving out toys.
Every day.
Every day?
Every day, five to eight minutes.
Every day for two weeks.
Nine days.
Every day. Nine days?
Oh.
Yep, nine days, but five to eight minutes a day in each classroom. Go ahead.
But that doesn't include the prizes.
The fun run. No, that does include the prizes.
That wasn't, yeah.
Um, and so one of the problems was it was taking away from learning time. Another problem was that kids were actually doing the fundraising, little kids, 'cause this is the elementary school, and felt pressured to be asking mom and dad and grandma and grandpa for lots of money. And the parents didn't like that, and the kids felt, some of the kids felt not good about themselves if they weren't doing it. Um, so where do we get involved? I don't know. I mean, we didn't have anything to do with it, we didn't even know about it. But once people start getting upset about it and complain about it, then all of a sudden we're involved, and they come talk to us, so I don't know where we go with this or what we do about it or how we prevent it from happening again. But like I said, it's not really our thing, we didn't, you know, we don't approve these things, we don't even know about them. You know, the only thing that I will throw out a word of caution in my opinion, I mean, if we've got somebody who finally stepped up to the plate for being leader, in a leadership position on PAC, and if if he or she gets a lot of flack for having organized this, I don't want that to happen either. I don't want it to be a big backlash of negativity on somebody who made some effort as a volunteer. So I think that, in my opinion, we have to be careful of that, but I also think that, you know, yeah, we've got a little problem here if we're taking away from class time to give out yo-yos and say, please, please ask mom for more money. I agree that that's not the best use of our time. So.
And then with that said, I got them too.
You got them too?
I got them.
Did they do it in Stowe too?
No.
Oh, just get notification.
So, but what struck me as some of the stuff that was going on, it, are they in violation of some policies? And just as an afterthought, when there is a violation of a policy, do we have a policy to follow a policy that is broken? What do we do?
Do you listen in on my phone mail stuff?
Well, there was no violation of policy, I mean, but clearly this, this really did not go off the way I think the PAC intended it to go off with the principal, and they knew going in, from talking with the principal, that this was not something that they, they were really looking at it and looking at it hard to see if it was going to be something they would do in, you know, in future years. And they've received much of the same feedback, so I think that they have learned that. They did, when I spoke with them, they'd already scaled back tremendously on the classroom pieces, unfortunately it was Monday, so, and and even so, some of those times were like when they were getting ready to go out for recess or leave for the day or their morning meeting time, and much of it is the motivational piece that they emphasized, although obviously the part about encouraging them to raise more money, absolutely.
That's what the gifts are.
Right, I mean, that's, that's.
The bribe. Back in my days, years ago, as the PTO president, these were often things that you were approached with to do fundraisers, with the magazine drives, the wrapping paper thing, all had that piece to it of like rah rah, let's have a pep rally, get the kids motivated to do all this. And I know there was always an option that we said.
None of that.
We're not doing that part, and of course the representatives are like, "Well, you don't understand," and like so much, and we're like, "No," so.
Right.
But I think it was probably from bad experiences like this, and it probably hasn't happened in a long time, and if it's someone new with younger kids or thinking, "Wow, this sounds great, I'm making a lot of money from the school." So I do get the sympathy to that part of someone trying to totally help out.
Absolutely, their, their end goal was to limit the amount of fundraising. They wanted to do it in one time, get it done.
But that's a good lesson too, you know, you don't get something for nothing.
Exactly, exactly, so they've definitely learned a lot.
Was all the money going to the school? Do the parents even know?
It's going to PAC.
It's going to PAC.
So I'm.
The fund enrichment?
No. Forty-eight percent goes to the organization.
Forty-eight percent goes to the.
Right, fifty-two percent goes back to the PAC.
Which is pretty, where someone does.
So forty-eight percent goes back to the fundraising company that's running this.
Just not totally uncommon for those kinds of.
Right, right, right. Like the wrapping paper thing, I think it's the same thing, you know, you get seven dollar roll. But you don't walk into the classroom and say, "Okay, Johnny, come on up here because you logged on last night and you sold blah blah blah." You have that option. But every night they log in their pledges, so every morning the kids are called up to be rewarded for the additional pledges and given a gift. And the teachers had their own contests for the classrooms.
Right, the class did.
So, and it was in the newsletter, "Oh, so-and-so's classroom is number one in grade two," and so, it's just like, people were taking kids out of schools, yeah, it was. It's not a good.
So they changed much of that by Monday.
Yeah.
But I think it's over, it's over today.
It was done today.
Today.
The last fundraiser we ever did, I have to say, is we had an opt-out form at the beginning of the year for PTO, and you said, "You could be sent all these things home or you can make a donation now." And I love that idea. And I loved it too, 'cause I'd rather have to get a hundred percent of the money than get all the other stuff.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of parents feel that way. In fact, a couple of parents said, "I'm not participating, I don't want my kids participating, here's a donation pack."
Right.
Right.
And that was always an option, yeah.
So that, and I think Stowe, somebody did.
Yeah, Hail, that's what Hail that.
The problem is the turnover with the volunteers for this is so great, because it is a very.
But it's the principal's responsibility.
Badless job, I mean, it's awful. Was my least favorite volunteer.
Yeah.
Doesn't, does the principal have to approve all of that? So I don't know what our role is, I mean, is. Oh, I don't. Let's, you know, what, what do we do about this? Michael, does the principal have to approve?
The principal does approve it, yeah.
Oh, congratulations.
All right.
And that's been taken care of.
Okay. So the principals are handling it?
Yes.
I think the poor principal is glad it's over too.
It just seems so logical, babe.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's so, he's, he's just inclusive and encouraging and positive, and he's, I'm sure he, this was hard on him.
And I didn't talk to him. I didn't even.
No, I won't give you a prize.
Oh, hell no you won't. And I did just say that.
Just call Lorraine up for a prize.
You get a prize.
You'll get a star.
Citizens got it?
Oh, no.
Oh, no, sorry.
I also did get an email just questioning where the money that you were asking for, for the Mars fund, where that was coming from.
Legal.
Hmm. That makes sense why it was. Okay, other than that, future meeting agenda items, you had mentioned the meeting with faculty?
Mm-hmm.
So that's done. So that's taken care of, and at some point we are going to be, do we wanna talk about or revisit the protocols and or, or meeting norms, since I don't know if we did.
We did not do them this fall.
Yeah.
At some point.
Do.
Do we, do we have to do them now?
No, 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 this is under action items, future meeting agenda items, so is that something we want? Those are gonna fund. Yeah. Not pretty sure where.
We can do them at the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Twenty-eighth of January.
Oh, that's.
And then the next? I'm sorry, she knew.
And then Maureen, what's next?
I believe the only things left are the consent agenda, the meeting, the meeting minutes from December third and this week's warrants. We kinda forget since we usually do them at the beginning, but if there are no questions or concerns, we'll consider them approved. Any significant changes to the minutes? Or is everybody good with them?
Can we just through, get this process through? Get the next meeting just real quick and just to check where we are?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, at the next meeting, do a quick run?
That'll probably be the twenty-eighth, 'cause the next meeting has probably gonna be the faculty.
That's right, okay.
So the twentieth is the day they're gonna talk about some requests?
Twenty-eighth, yes.
Is that our next meeting or not?
No, the next one will be the fourteenth.
Will be the meeting of faculty.
We're gonna try to move that, right?
Possibly.
Possible.
I don't know. Hmm? I wanna really go to Chris Heron. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know. It was weird that many people wanna go.
It feels like all the good stuff for high schools, school committee night, I miss something else too. Nothing more than that.
But there have been conflicts in the past.
There's pretty good conflicts, yeah, like set up that I was like, oh.
And since the press has left, we have absolutely no citizens to comment.
Do you have anything?
You have anything? He's saying, please hurry up and finish. So I guess that leads only that final motion, unless there's.
Anything?
Well, there's.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I think.
Well, we didn't do that, did we?
I just did, I just did.
There was an ask from, from Asha with Eric, yeah?
I asked if there were any significant changes, didn't I?
We did.
The only question I have is, and I'm sure it's fine, 'cause you guys talked about it, but the.
Even if it's not, it's too late, we're at a group.
Well, no, we can rescind our precedent for a license, but.
What was it? It was the vote.
Giving you a hard time tonight, I'm sorry.
No, I don't, it's fine. It was the vote for the staff surveys, there it is.
And what is it that we voted on? Is that your question?
Well, it's reworked, you have a change to this matter.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You know, the staff survey question that we had.
She hasn't made her question yet.
Right, 'cause when I read it last time, it didn't sound right, but we talked about it earlier, so that the policy meeting is creating a staff survey.
Correct.
So, okay, because when I read it the first time, it sounded like there was a question about whether to go into a survey or not, and I wasn't quite sure that's what we said.
Actually, it's part of the educator evaluation system, we need to have a staff survey for our next frame, so that works perfectly.
Ah, so we don't have to touch one of them, all right. Okay, no problem.
Okay. Now we. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting? And that's unanimous, so.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah.
Happy Hanukkah.